Where the stream bank is collapsing. So, we, from what I've been told by our engineer, we will be going out the bid within a couple of weeks for that project and he still expects it to be done this fall.
Much better. In a couple of weeks?
Well, we'll go out the bid in a couple of weeks.
I hope that happens.
I don't see how it can happen because them want 30 days to accept this. Then you have to award them, but...
It'll probably be done in October, at least at the earliest, then November, like...
The awarding will be in November, so I don't know. But he seems to think it may get done this year.
Is there, is there a reason why it needs to be pushed through this year? That is, considering the weather, if the weather begins to get wet and cold, is that going to impact the, the quality of the road work? Will we have to live with the consequences of that if we rush, is my concern?
Yes. So, if it gets too cold, then we won't, we will have to postpone it. So, I guess we'll just wait and see when the bids come in, when they're awarded, and what the weather's like. I would think it would be next year.
Who would make that decision?
Engineer would have to determine.
But, for example, the paving can't be done after a certain point, anyway.
If they're going to put ballast on the banks of the stream and do that sort of thing, that probably could be done. But I'm going to defer to the decision of the engineer.
The Penns Manor project, the development that the township's completing on Old Baltimore Pike on the other side of the township near New Garden, is almost complete. We hope to have the roads paved within the next few weeks. However, we're waiting for the ADA ramps to be put in right now. And we hope to get it paved. It'll probably be a month before it gets paved. There's a zoning hearing board on case on September 17th, tomorrow night, here in the township building. It's for variance to permit a detached garage on Byron Court. I think I've talked in the past, and I wanted to mention, I know some residents have brought this to my attention, that there is a bike touring club in the township where a resident has a lot of motorcycles and he, people come and pay for tours. So, they rent these motorcycles and then they go on a guided tour all around. So, some residents have recently complained about this. The township, we were just made aware of it, here it's been in operation for a long time. So, the, we have advised the homeowner, they do have to go for a zoning hearing board for that use, because it is not a use by right.
Senator, do you have any comments about that? You own a motorcycle.
I don't know the individual, and I only know about it from what has been told to us by Lisa. So, I don't know very much about it all. I'm wondering, has the zoning officer talked to him, number one?
Yes.
And do we know when there's going to be a filing so that action can be taken?
He has met with our zoning officer a couple of times. The zoning officer has discussed it with me to determine if it is a use by right, because it wasn't as clear in the zoning ordinance. But we finally determined it's not a use by right. And so, he was advised on Friday that he must apply for a zoning hearing. He picked up the form, so we're just waiting for him to bring the form back in.
Is there a time limit now that he's on notice? Is there a time limit, a statute of limitations clicking or anything?
Felix told him he needs to get it in here so that it can be scheduled within 30 days.
Thank you.
Sounds like it, Senator.
Have I answered your question, Mike?
From the little I know and have heard about this, this is a case of a true commercial operation, in my opinion, from what I've heard. I think what has typically happened in cases like this is that the township relies on the affected residents, other interested parties, to challenge the use, more than the township challenging the use. I would encourage the township to mount their own investigation and case, because the residents may not be capable or willing to, you know, put out the fund, you might say, cost of defending the township's residential zoning.
Let me express my ignorance. I don't know how this business is conducted. Is it, does a party, a resident in the township advertise or promote?
Yes.
They advertise, they have, I would say, I'm guessing now, 10 to 20 interested riders that are going to go on a tour.
It's like 65 bikes.
They come into this wide residential area and test bikes, choose which, is the way it was described today, test bikes, to find out which one they'd like to go on this weekend tour, whatever kind of tour they sponsor. The day of the tour, they all, or maybe the night before the tour, they assemble at that house, stay overnight. All this is for me.
Yeah, it's great commercial.
And then they head off. Part of the concern I, related to me, was that the day prior to the tour, when they all come in and they say, "Let me try that bike, let me try this one," and, you know, it's a long private lane, they're all going in at the lane, you know, and these are pretty, yeah, maybe motorcycles from what I hear, some older ones and so forth. So, they, they all get to pick their favorite motorcycle. And then they go off and tour, so they're gone for a few days, then they come back. I don't know, maybe they have, where they have celebration when they get back, I don't, I don't know that detail. But it sounds, I wouldn't want it next to me, just like all this practice range shooting, you know? My neighbor had 65 motorcycles and all kinds of people coming.
Do the people who come for this event, do they necessarily own their own motorcycles?
No, no. They're all, they're all, it's apparently very satisfying to the motorcycle enthusiast to ride a particular Triumph or some, is that a type of motorcycle?
Yes.
No, okay. A special motorcycle, so, you know, they have, they have all, a good collection.
Yes, she's a queen about it.
I remember that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just another aspect of what John was saying is, and it might be another point for our chief, is these people don't have their own bikes, so they're coming here to use bikes. It throws into question whether they might have motorcycle licenses, you know, in the research, are they legally allowed to drive a motorcycle like this? Spot checking this, or whatever it might be, it's just a thought, another aspect of this that, that might be worth looking at.
Yeah, well, how do you know they don't have their own bikes?
Well, because, because of what John said, they don't arrive with their own bikes.
Okay, then I'll defer to John. How does, John, how do you know they don't have their own bikes?
Now, what I carefully said was, everything I said was what was related to me. By someone that's familiar with these neighbors that are not too happy.
Thank you.
I don't know anything.
I have to interrupt myself here and announce that at the end of this meeting, we, the Board of Supervisors will be going into an executive session. Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Richard Goff from the Chester County Press with, for Lisa. Lisa, are you able to disclose the name of the company, the business?
Yes. If you give me one second.
Yeah, sure. And I just wanted to understand correctly that this individual who owns the company will need to fill out a form with the eventual act of going before the zoning hearing board. I did not get to determine exactly what.
Because the, the business that they're operating is not permitted in the district they live in.
Okay.
So, it's not a use by right. So, they would need to go to a zoning hearing board case to be permitted or not to operate this type of business out of their home.
Great, thank you.
And it's called Retro Tours. Somebody else just said that.
John?
All right, I want to add one other thing, response to start your question. Part of what I related was based on what I read on their extensive website. So, they, and that, I think, addresses Mike's question, do they advertise? They certainly do through the internet.
Lisa, go ahead with the next.
The supervisors and I will begin budget preparation next month. I wanted to announce, which I did at the work session, that the county issued some new weight limits on some bridges in the township. One is the State Street Bridge over Red Clay Creek, which is a state-owned bridge, but it will be restricted to 30 ton. Route 82, which is Creek Road over Red Clay Creek, will be restricted to 29 ton. And then Burt Mill Bridge over Red Clay Creek will be posted once the report is completed.
Burt Mill Road over the Red Clay Creek?
The bridge.
There's two.
There's one.
It just says Burt Mill Road over Red Clay Creek, that that bridge is being evaluated and it will be posted once completed.
Red Clay Creek go under Burt Mill Road?
Wouldn't that be Borough's Run?
That's right.
Borough's Run is one of, the other one is...
The Red Clay Creek does not go under Burt Mill Road.
No, no, that's not, no. Yeah.
Not going to be in the triptych area.
But the state has cleared that up. Two guys are posting down on...
It goes back to your sign.
That's right, they finally took it down.
Oh, they did? I don't know about that. Sweet you wheel, congratulations, Mike.
We had a repeater for our radio system installed so that we can better communicate with the county and other municipalities and the school district. The paving, well, actually, the milling to prepare for the paving will begin tomorrow, and then the paving will be done next week.
Which roads are they?
We're doing Hillendale, Nine Gates.
Are we doing a intersection down here?
Which end of Hillendale?
We're doing Hillendale from under Railroad Bridge.
Greenwood Road?
Up to, I think it's up to Norway, and then we're doing from here down to Greenwood.
Yes.
We have signs posted, I'll list them, yes, signs posted all the way to 82, to Creek, for Hillendale. So, beyond Norway.
Delvaughn is doing a great deal of work on Burt Mill Road and Porsha and Delaware today, and I hope for how long? It's one lane.
Pleasant Bank Lane's being paved this way, too. Pleasant Bank Lane is being paved this way.
Well, then, then we're doing, so we're doing East Hillendale, Greenwood Road to Rosedale, and McFarland to 82. Then we're doing under the Railroad Bridge. We're doing Rosedale from McFarland Road to the Borough Line and Nine Gates Road. So, we're giving out notices, we already gave out notices last week about the milling and then this week about the paving. The gas pumps now have keys in them at the garage, so every vehicle that accesses the gas pump will have a key. And the cameras are being installed at the maintenance garage. That's all I have. And we have in addition, John Hadrick wanted to give an update on the bike way.
Want to do that now?
Sure.
This is an importation, because I've never worked this machine before.
In fact, we've never used the machine, but we're going to find out. We noticed a few minutes ago, it was...
It is flickering.
Only flickering.
Mm-hmm.
But Bill is working on that, probably right now.
Thanks, Phil.
Very good.
More problems.
Well, hopefully, some of you can see that. This is an update, really brought on by a sequence of events that really surprised all of us since the last meeting in August. So, I just want to go through this. Construction bids were received via PENDOT on August 15th. And Tom, if you'll flip that page.
There it is.
Here's the email that we got from PENDOT. As discussed on the phone, the bids received for the Kennet Bike Way project, three low bidders were, 1, 2, 3. Okay, so, this is why we came in last month, $799, 300 and some dollars. We came in last month and asked the board for approval of a proposal to make up that shortfall. The shortfall was $141,000. That is, the lowest bid was $141,000, more than available funds. We proposed, the board agreed, township would pay $35,000, and PENDOT would pay $106,000. PENDOT, in very short order, agreed to that. So, that was a few days after August 19th.
And that's what you presented to us at the previous meeting?
At the August meeting.
Yeah.
And everything was going along smoothly. We expected to proceed on that basis until last Tuesday, the 10th of September. Lisa received an email notice of a pending lawsuit.
Why, I'm served.
Oh, I'm sorry, she was served. That's mean someone walked in and handed you a paper. Just like that show on TV. So, anyway, we read through that and found out that there was a, an additional lower bid by a group called Highway Materials, but they were disqualified by PENDOT. So, when PENDOT showed us the bidders, they ignored Highway Materials. But Highway Materials thought they had standing, so they, they served the township with a lawsuit. We, Tom and I huddled with PENDOT and Bob Adams, and we pretty quickly determined that there were three options. One, we could accept the low bid from Highway Materials. The downside of that was, by the way, their bid was $682,000 versus this $799, $118,000 difference. The downside of us accepting that is PENDOT would take away our $743,000. So, that was not a good deal. We could accept the low bid from the Scott Building, which again is the number one low bidder on that list Tom showed us. If we did that, we'd have to deal with a lawsuit. I'll come back to the lawsuit in a minute. Or we could reject all bids that were received on August 15th, re-scope and rebid the project. That was kind of the no-brainer, and that's the direction we're going. We asked Lisa to inform PENDOT, which she did on the last Friday. We will work with our designer, because we have to re-scope the job a little bit. I think what we have to do is make the case that we are removing some scope from the project such that it justifies rebidding. If we didn't remove anything, they use the term, "We were shopping bids." Just, you know, look, you know, try, let's try again, kind of thing. And that's apparently not acceptable.
John, will you have to remove anything that's important?
We haven't talked about it yet, but you may recall, we were before you, I think it was in July, and we have a $100,000 grant application for landscaping. There's a little bit of landscaping in this, we'll remove it. We've got plenty of resources to cut down some more trees.
You could add something, too, really, couldn't you? Rescope it?
Rescope this?
Rescoping means re-scope.
PENDOT did not mention adding. They said either substitute materials or remove...
Something. Working.
But how does this keep us from going through the same problem? So, the bids all come back...
Well, let me get back, let me get back to the, we could receive bids from a whole new group, it's open season on the bidding. The reason this Highway Materials was disqualified, my interpretation, when you look at their 27 pages of material they submitted with the served lawsuit, was that PENDOT made a mistake. And this Highway Materials attached justification to show that they were qualified, but PENDOT didn't correct the record since June of 2012. But PENDOT says a decision is a decision, they're not going to entertain changing their determination. So, it's not, it's like, it's not worth the effort.
Because the township ultimately approves it.
You know, when they did that bike path through Centerville, we didn't go through all this business, because they're done.
That was Del Don.
That was Del Don.
Right.
Long story. We could be back in exactly the same situation, six miles down the road, the bids come back, if they're still in it, and PENDOT says, "We didn't like it the first time, so we're not going to like it the second time."
No, they have a letter, they have a letter now, says they are qualified.
That they are qualified.
Yeah, they are, but they weren't.
And that's not to say that we won't go back to the same, the same situation.
Probably be another reason.
That's right. I believe it.
I don't know. So, let me see where I am here. The rebidding delays us four or five weeks, plus the time that it will take us to re-scope. But I don't think that will take long. Pushes us to November for the bid letting. It's not, it's not a factor, because we're not going to do the construction in the winter, I'm hopeful, because we're going to take a little bit out of the scope, and we have a demonstrated lower bid, that the $799 number will, which was the low bid, will drop somewhat. We still may not have enough funds, and we'll come back and see if we can make another deal with PENDOT. In fact, my thinking is, they've already approved $106,000.
Did that make you enough?
That may be enough, and I'll say it, no problem. So, anyway.
Good luck.
That's the update, and that's why we had that resolution on the agenda. It's, it's not needed now, because that whole thing is canceled, so to speak.
Yeah, John, Richard Goff, Chester County Press, just wanted to ask you, you may have stated it in your summary, but I just didn't quite pick it up. Highway Materials, Inc., what made them disqualified?
What PENDOT explained it was that they contracted or subcontracted more than 50% of the work. I did not read all the detail, but a fair amount of the support that they have to demonstrate to qualify for PENDOT, there is a whole raft of things, but one is that you don't sort of be a front, that's my term, and say, "I have a contract in business, but the business is just hiring a whole bunch of people, you don't have, you know, direct control of it." And the 50% is apparently a mark. This company claims that they demonstrated all that in June of 2012, and PENDOT should have marked this box, but they marked that box. That's kind of the way it was explained to me. But, you know, I, to be honest, I wouldn't get into that, because it's a legal matter which we can't hope to adequately assess, but that's the kind of story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Act 205 of 1984 requires that I inform the supervisors what our potential pension costs will be next year for the employees. This is for the state pension. So, it's projected the next year will be $54,061. This year it was $50,699, and the township will receive $26,000 to offset that.
For next year?
For this year. We won't know until next year what we'll receive to offset that, but it's usually pretty close to that.
Do we need a motion based on it?
No, I just have to inform you. We have a resident named Tom Shorn, who had expressed interest back in the spring to be on the Business Advisory Committee. The supervisors met with him last week, and they are going to consider appointing him to the committee.
I will so move.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Could you tell us a little bit about this fellow's background, if you're familiar with the township?
He's a, he was a municipal CPA for a long time. He's not a municipal CPA anymore, but he's still a CPA, he has his own business, he travels a lot. He did read the description of the committee and felt that he could offer some input, and...
That's expertise, I suppose.
So, I, he also said, though, once he starts working with the committee, if he, if they feel he doesn't offer anything, you know, he'll leave, you know? But I...
Two of us, one now.
He lived in the township for a couple of years, he lives over off of Greenwood Road.
Good.
So, I will send the other two committee members his information.
Thank you.
I did explain that you guys are currently working on a capital fund, so he was aware of that.
Okay, the road work report is quite brief, but...
Can I interrupt you, Mike, for a second? I'm sorry.
And the subject is?
I know this is a resolution for the Kennet Bike Way, we're skipping it?
Yes.
Because since we're withdrawing the bids, we no longer need it.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, Mike.
The railroad crossing at McFarland Road has been completed. It's a pleasure now to drive over it, we don't have to skip and jump up and so forth. The road crew is pulling shoulders, prepping for paving and tree trimming. Road crew is searching for a water shut-off valve for the Rosedale Pump Station, and you'd think this is something that they could just easily find. Roger was explaining the situation at the Rosedale Pump Station, as you probably all know, it's a rather flat area. It turns out that there are a variety of pipes under Rosedale and along the side, gas, sewer, electric, and it's, it's a nightmare, and they are trying to find the right valve for that purpose. Paving will be beginning this week and will last for another two weeks, as Lisa has explained. Continue to upgrade the township road signs, we're about 50% complete, and we should do, we should meet that goal probably sometime next year. And that's the end of the report. Any questions?
Mike, can I ask you, what does it mean to pull a shoulder? I know what it means when I'm lifting the wrong weights the wrong way, but I'm quite interested in relation to a road shoulder.
What that means is that we go along the shoulder and we grade it, and we relay it. In cases where we have used road, used McCann Road, we will put that down in place, because it adds a lot more stability. And that's what we call pulling the shoulder. And that's what we call pulling the shoulder.
On Hillendale, appear to see they cut back the bank on a few properties.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The one on, I'm sorry.
I was just curious, how many miles are being paved or in the township this year?
Ooh, I don't know that I can answer that. I don't know.
I believe it's about two.
Have to get back to you on that.
Two and a half.
I don't know.
Okay.
But I can find out the exact...
Yeah.
Good.
Quick question. Square feet, actually.
That may not be the right answer.
Bob, well, you're going to be replacing the remaining of the wooden signs, I take it.
That's correct.
Is there still available to the residents to, to either assume or acquire when they're pulled?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a fee associated with that?
Unless we're always to pay.
No. It's first come, first served. Whoever wants them, that's, they come getting them.
I think we're going to relocate it, actually, to a non-emergency site. We can still maintain Pleasant Bank Lane, but just pull them closer to our homes.
Submit your request.
Okay.
The one issue we have been running into is that a lot of residents don't understand that they can't have plantings in our right-of-way or stone walls. Now, granted, they're everywhere. They've been there a long time, but we're, we're running into a lot of issues with that. And for example, you know, if the site, if the plantings affect the site distance, then the road crew will cut them down, which no, doesn't make anybody happy. But it's becoming an issue everywhere.
Okay. Moving right along. Bob?
Lisa mentioned the Penns Manor at work. Some work has been done. We have two requests for escrow releases. On the site improvement, escrow release number one for $25,630 and maybe eight cents. And on the driveway widening, escrow, widening project, escrow release number one also for $25,475 and 67 cents. I move we approve both of those releases.
I second that. All those in favor or any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
We have one request for an extension, borough's rich property until October 21st. I move we approve that extension.
I will second that also. Any questions? Any comments? Oh, tips?
You may mention for the pension, 50 some thousand. The 26,000 comes in from somebody else that...
From, back from the state.
Yeah.
Back to the state.
Yeah.
It's their pension money. Goes into their fund, but they give us back.
Yes.
26? And this will, will be fully funded when this is paid?
Yes. Yes.
So we're going to vote on the extension?
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we open to public comment. Anybody want to say anything?
Well, I was just wondering what the status of the work going on at McFarland Road of where you live, Lisa?
Um...
Granite Ridge?
They, well, if you go by their, they have the building pads leveled out now, so you can really tell where the buildings are going to be. They're starting the sewer extension work this week, so it will be closed on and off for the next two weeks, but open to local traffic. They finally seem to have the stormwater controls doing their job.
Okay.
And they only have building permits for phase one, which is 56 units. But they claim that they got the funding for the other 56 units, so they will be getting the building permits for that soon.
Lisa, I'll listen to her again, planning commission. Do they still have a deadline at the end of the month? We haven't heard anything as a planning commission, I mean, end of the year, to have a CO.
Oh, for their funding?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
So that's not to be a concern of ours? I'm just worried about a Penns Manor type thing, you know, dirt being dug up and all of a sudden the project's pulled.
I mentioned that to George Beer once, and he didn't seem to think that was an issue, so...
Okay. And I would think officially...
Until it becomes an issue. Until it becomes an issue. We've been through that before, and I recognize Penns Manor illustrating that.
Right.
And I know, we've had several people call here asking questions because they say they've already had a rental agreement.
Would it be appropriate for the township to request something in writing as to anything that...
I could ask that.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I mean, it's private enterprise, so, you know, they haven't done anything wrong yet.
We're interested in, in stabilizing the site in the event of such a thing as happened in Penns Manor. I don't know that we have the right to escrow for such a contingency, which we do not.
Well, I just, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but during the planning commission process, we were under the pressure, they had to have a CO by the end of December of this year. Certificate of occupancy, for those that might not know what a CO is.
George, George made a lot of comments on deadlines, but it all tied back to the financing.
Yeah, exactly.
But that seemed to be a moving or changing story, so...
Well, and again, because financing is, is a type of thing that can really trip us up. If he fails and all of a sudden we got this big plot of mud to deal with, that's one of the reasons why.
I can definitely ask him that.
But it sounds like it's not an issue, because he's got approval for another 50 some years.
That's, I recognize your point, Bob, and it's an extremely good one.
Okay.
Whether we have the right to demand that, demand something for such a contingency is...
Oh, we have the escrow.
Yeah, we have the escrow.
We have escrow, but that's for certain things.
Yeah.
It doesn't cover, what if he abandons the place overnight?
That's why you need a bond.
We can't use any of that escrow because it's for specific purposes.
Right.
And he's got a good point.
But I don't mind asking.
Yeah, just a conversation might be all we...
I would ask.
It's not a bad idea to talk to Bob Adams about that, too.
It didn't like, there's been bargaining chips to get you guys to move.
Yeah.
You think that would really be bargaining?
Sure would do that.
Shame on you.
The other thing is, some of the residents along McFar, well, all of the residents along McFarland were offered landscaping from him.
Yeah.
If they wanted it, and he would pay to install it. And I think a few of them did choose, so they're doing that now, installing landscaping.
Okay. Good.
One more question. Do we have any comments of what happened at the planning commission regarding the gun ordinance?
They briefly discussed it and assigned a subcommittee, and they were going to, I sent them all the comments I had received and all the comments we received from Bob Adams, and then they were going to work as a subcommittee and then discuss it at their next meeting. Same thing with the rental ordinance.
Oh, good.
Any other comments?
Just a, one more question. A general question about people who've come forward to, offered to ease their land for conservation easements. Does the township keep a list of those or...
Yes.
Oh, there is a list?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there have been people that have come forward?
That used to happen a long time ago. Now, it, that list is bare insofar as people initiating the idea. We, we, the Kennet House of Land Trust went out and touched people. That disappeared a long time ago, and nothing has been done until last year. I personally began to work on that. There is one conservation easement at the moment, working, and that's about all I can tell you.
Okay. In this process, have we turned down people who have...
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. We went, we went on two, went through the appraisal process, and we made an offer and it was rejected by the owner, okay, in both cases.
This past year, there were two that I could think of.
Yes.
Where we, we were lowball to what they were looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Back to the gun ordinance, has it been used or employed or needed?
I heard recently, which Albert can jump in here, but I was told that there was an issue on Fairville Road, and that the police were handling it, and I, I would have to ask Albert to say what, I don't know the result.
If it's open plan, I'm not going to comment on that part. Okay. Any other thing? Therefore, I move that we adjourn, and I guess that knock is a second. But we will meet upstairs in the conference room for executive session.
We need to get together again.
Did Roger get your sign up yet? Okay. He said he was ordering it.
Yeah, I still got the... So that's a good, that's a good target, so if you're going to do something.
I have said a couple of things this week, three or four. Starting tomorrow. I want to... On that, we'll have the legal issue. Here we are.
Is this project? The room project? Oh, you know, the website.
Here, it's just... I'll double check. At the start of this, I'm sure... I don't think I've seen a certain percentage of it. One way to structure it, didn't even get... Since I'm not... Sure. Let me ask Lisa about this. I guess I would have... Yes. I thought you were asking for some... I think it's going to end today, because I think we're getting six, twelve. How that whole system works, I don't really know. In fact, we have checked. We heard, we heard once more, they've been disqualified. I got that. I've been hearing, so... They're, you know, they're not up to the job.
Got a phone call from her, that's 88911 for the rooms.
Whoops. Thank you very much. I don't, to be honest, I don't... I just didn't know, I don't know what it was. I'll determine that, but I agree, I appreciate your comments, yes. Thank you.
At the moment, with everybody having the pension, what is going to get and what to do?
Well, I would talk to Darrell on Thursday, but we haven't talked to him. I think we're all self-managed, although he doesn't...
I'll tell them about it.
Yeah. I put down some, you know, at the end of last week, I want to see what you said. So...
I'm a beer man.
I threw it up just a few.
I know. That's me. Every year.
Right.
I know. No, we're always, every year.
What'd you expect?
That's why I get some... I know you think I'm crazy. I know you have. Oh, absolutely. Because the room's already signed.
Yeah. We're going to narrow the length of the thing.
Thank you, guys.